...utilizes this with benefits, therefore we need to reduce itself or herself of evidence does not make use of the same just on basis of.
Yeah, if we did vote tonight, you two couldn't do that because we would have a bar. We need to re- make a form.
The next item is announcements. Uh, the certification of the election just completed has not yet occurred. Therefore, this council sits as the council. Uh, when that certification is completed, we will then make that square in the ceremony. So that will not, not occur this year. Next item, this is any other announcements. Approval of the minutes of the whatever.
Motion to approve the minutes of the town council meeting event of the 2022 unless anybody has any comments or questions for consideration.
Motion made exactly. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any opposed? Thank you. We'll then move to whole business. In whole business, uh, the item for this evening is a compilation of the comments made on the draft proposals on licensing short-term rentals that were discussed two weeks ago, October 20th, 2022. And we've received comments from Isabel Atia, from Mike Spears, from Sue Tebow, and from Norm Pacheco. Uh, and those are in your package. Um, we are willing, ready to hear from any other public comments that may be, may be, uh, forthcoming this evening. If I might, before we ask for that, I'll ask Councilman Adderall's to comment.
Yeah, Bob and I worked on this pretty diligently. We wouldn't ask to do it at a council meeting. And since we, Bob and I, done the payment license, the noise license, at that time I thought it was good for Bob and I to do it because he's trying to do things rather quickly. But I've had some comments from people. I have a short-term rental as the con point that I list on VRBO. So to be on the safe side, I don't want to do anything improper or even have the view of doing anything improper. So I'm going to step back from this. Um, if anybody wants to take my place, they're more than welcome to do so. But I certainly don't want to have anybody thinking that I'm doing something better for myself, which, which by making this is actually hurting myself. Whatever I, whatever, I always put my feelings, private feelings, in, um, aside the benefit of the town. So I'm going to step back from this.
Any other council comments or questions regarding? As I said, uh, in my discussion on October 20th, this is a process by which we are going to take a matter that we haven't faced before, and the first, uh, action will be to draft a proposed article for the ordinances. I believe, having done that and having to some extent, from the depths of what the response to this is and the degree to which this has zoning implications, it has, uh, affordable housing implications, is, is my opinion, and I would solicit from the council, they thought that we would place this in a, in a cold pattern while we allow, first of all, data gathering, a decision as to whether we're going to take and, uh, refer this to the zoning, uh, sorry, the planning board on its way to the zoning board for any, uh, zoning changes, and that we would not take action on this at this point. We have learned a great deal. I've spoken at some length to the solicitor. I'll ask if he has any comments to add to this, but I believe that we are at a point where we now know some things and we need to assess the implications of a decision. And I, again, would be grateful for the comments of the council and the solicitor with respect to that.
Yes, so, uh, I, uh, I felt the, the questions and the comments from all the people who participated roughly a month ago were really, really important to people that have been disturbed by short-term rentals, people that have had success with it, some of the more experienced people that had a lot of success, but they, they figured out a way to get rid of some of the non, uh, non-desirable renters. So that, that really was a great background for me to understand it, and I looked at it. Uh, I spent an awful lot of time with the Newport Solicitor face-to-face today, as well as the Newport Assistant Solicitor, and their, their model doesn't work for us because it, it, it's very complicated. It's built up over hundreds of years. I mean, the sailors, of course, in, in the BT and hundreds who have short-term rentals. Oh, I hadn't thought of it. Yeah, so, but they told us, uh, in particular, think of this as a business in a residential label. Start with that, and then they find out that we could feel that way. But, uh, it was, uh, very enlightening. I also realized, only today, which of course all these people that do this in the house know that there's a law that came into effect, January 4th, 2022, under Tourism and Development that tells you about how you register with the platform, et cetera. And I'll give a copy of this to Heather, which should be circulated to the town council the next couple of days. And then to one of Patrick, as you call him, to the mayor. Thank you. So, uh, I, I, I really think that the town's on the right start and it's really balancing, uh, the necessity. Mike Spears and my brother, and I know he addressed historical issues of, of, of the town, so, of all the people, and great, great, uh, advice in, for the first time, many controversies. There, there doesn't seem to be any animosity, that everybody's on the same page, that we get to the right answer. Definitely.
Thanks. As you recall, the, um, essence of the dispute for many people was the fact that either noise, disturbing the peace, uh, traffic, parking, or those kinds of, uh, activities by renters was what was precipitating their concern. And I would encourage those who are in that category to make use of the fact that we have a noise ordinance, a disturbing the peace ordinance, we have parking ordinances, and that the police can be called to, um, handle those matters when, um, that happens next door to you when you're in your house. And, uh, I, I think that that's the short term, not to borrow the, the word, but that's the solution for the moment, that if there are things that happen to you, either you get that satisfaction or you bring that to the council, or you haven't gotten that satisfaction, and we, we then properly deal with those individual cases. Meanwhile, I expect that we will look at this, look at the state law, uh, the state law regarding it, and return at an appropriate time to say, here's the new, new proposal on how we like to see it. Sure.
So you're suggesting that we're going to send this to the planning board?
If that's your desire, again.
Is that what you suggested?
I'm saying that that is one of the solutions that might happen. Yeah. Do you, is that your, your preference, or, or do you have a position on that?
Okay, I'm just, just listening right now. So, okay, so we would definitely vote on that.
Right, I'm going to suggest that given the nature of what this agenda ideally is, that we not vote on what we're going to do this evening. We simply listen to the, the inputs that we receive, and then sample five of that. And I would imagine that that would be one of the, one of the first things that we would do in order to get a sense of the zoning implication, because I think that's what's absent in what we have been focused thus far.
So potentially we're going to ask the zoning board and the planning board for their opinion on this, on this.
We would, we would go to the, as is mandated by the ordinance, if we would go to the planning board first and say to them, you tell us whether this has zoning implications that is driven by the comprehensive plan. At that point, where they could be identified, yes, we'd vote against them.
I'll stick around and see if we can do that.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Just go ahead with your. Thank you, good. Come to the, uh, oh, I'm sorry. Uh, and please, I would like to, uh, give us your name and address. We'd be grateful.
Certainly. Um, my name is Sue Tebow. I am one of the people that responded, and you have a letter, I believe, in your packet today, um, for your consideration. We do have a home that we treasure, um, at 24 Carey Lane, um, in Little Compton, and, um, we have been long-term renters for probably 35 years. This is our summer vacation spot, and so finally we have our own property here now, and we do share it with other, um, short-term rentals. I wanted to address just a few things. I, I'm not going to repeat everything I said in my letter, but, um, I would, um, take a little exception to the comment that we should treat these as business, uh, businesses, and, um.
Can I clarify that?
Yes.
That's not my thing. I solicited the opinion of, of two Newport Solicitors. They said to me, you might look at it, or you look at it as a bit.
Okay.
That's not my position.
Okay, okay. And I, I certainly don't consider myself a business. I'm a homeowner, and I, I am a person who loves this area and would do no harm to this area. I, I am not in the business of making money. This is not a business to me. It's just what we need to do to afford our property and, um, be able to enjoy being here, and, which we greatly do. Um, I also wanted to bring to your attention, which I, I don't see addressed in, in any other pa-, uh, any other responses that you've received, um, there's discussion about the need for requiring a rental agreement, um, by short-term rentals. And, um, I want you to know that we, I, I can't speak for all short-term rental owners, but we, um, our rental platform is through Evolve. It's a high-quality rental agency, um, and they have very specific requirements for us as the homeowners to follow, and also for the people who rent our properties. Um, I, I have a copy of it here. I didn't get it in your packet today, but I'm happy to share that with the board. Um, this is Evolve's, and it's, it's a very detailed, it's, um, it's, it's 11 pages. Um, it does say, um, it addresses maximum occupancy, um, back here. Um, it, it states at the beginning, um, under number three, that vacation rentals, rental may have specific rules and policies regarding pets, smoking, vaping, quiet hours, parking, pool, and/or hot tub usage, and other local HOA and property regulations. And then it's going to refer you to Exhibit A at the end. This is my rental agreement with all STRs, okay? Um, and, and Exhibit A is our specific house rules. So, um, going forward with the, um, the rental agreement, it states under max, maximum occupancy under Section B, parties and large gatherings are not permitted at vacation rental under any circumst- circumstances. Conduct of unauthorized parties and gatherings may result in your removal from the property without refund, and Evolve may contact local law enforcement when appropriate. You agree to respect the vacation rental, neighbors, the surrounding community, and to follow all applicable laws, regulations, and ordinances, and rules, including noise ordinances, period. You agree to conduct yourself in a manner that does not disrupt neighbors or community members. This is what every STR, um, rental of our home has to agree to. Um, there are many other provisions, um, and then at the end it does attach, it says, see Exhibit A, um, additional house rules. And to that is attached our house rules, which further state, our house rules, no smoking, no pets allowed, no events, parties, or large gatherings, must be at least 25 years old to book, um, and they are to report any damages that occur to both the, um, to the best guest contact and to Evolve. So, um, the notion that if you don't get involved and regulate this, there is this completely unregulated, um, um, thing going on in your community is, is not correct. Most of us have such rental agreements, whether, now, Evolve does advertise its properties on Airbnb and, um, VRBO and other, other sites, but this is always attached to it. So, and I assume, I, I, and I will check into this, I'm happy to check into this. I, I volunteered to help this, this committee as much as I can, this council. Um, I assume that other rental platforms require the same or similar things. So I just want you to know that this is not unregulated. Um, as, as you've mentioned, the state also passed a law recently that all, all STRs now need to be registered with the state, and there's a fee for that, and it's an annual fee. Um, so there, there is a lot of regulation that we're already, um, expected to follow, and so I, I would just urge you to be very, um, um, considerate and, um, careful in, in going through this and, and deciding what, what to regulate. There's some things in your proposed regulation that make no sense to me. They don't seem to respond to the, to the complaints you've already received, which are noise and parking. That, that's what I got out of, um, the things I read. I wasn't at the first meeting, I didn't hear other people speak, but that's what I got out of it was the main concern. So I would just suggest that we look at this carefully, we realize that there's a lot of regulation that we're already requiring, um, our homeowners to follow, and, um, let's address what, what problems may exist, but let's not go and, and, you know, reinvent the wheel here because I, I just don't see the necessity for it. So that's really all I needed to say. If, if I'm, I'm happy to address anyone's questions as well.
I would be grateful for a copy of your convenience or whatever it is.
The rental agreement, yes. Okay, thank you, thank you.
Hi, Lavinia Gadsden, and I'm glad Sue went ahead of me because I was going to say I thought her letter was excellent, and that my, I think the takeaway for me, as well as reading all the other letters, is there should be an advisory committee, and I think you should just have, you know, the citizens and people who are involved in these businesses and short-term rentals are involved.
Thank you. Uh, that's my suggestion. Any others, any other questions, just, please?
Uh, my name is Norm Pacheco. I live, um, on Indian Road. I have been operating, uh, Airbnb, um, out of my home. I live there. I live upstairs for about seven years now, and, uh, never has a neighbor of mine had a complaint, uh, the people are, the, the reviews we get, um, you know, I had a neighbor tell me, if, if I feel bad about myself, read the reviews you get. The people that come to Little Compton and enjoy it, and enjoy where we happen to call our home, um, has made a difference, uh, in us keeping that home and enjoying it, and, uh, and also being able to share it with, uh, other renters that come. Short-term renters, um, sometimes these are just weekend renters. They're here for a funeral or a wedding, no other places to stay, and, uh, our facility meets that. It's, it's not a total, like I said, we live in the top half of the house and the bottom half is, um, open for the guests. Uh, they come and go independently, they have their own entrance, and, uh, um, we abide by all the rules and, uh, have had nothing but good reviews, so I just think that's a, a lot of a difference in, versus the properties that maybe in other communities, possibly here too, I don't know, that homes are bought and just for the purpose of renting, and then maybe turning them over in a, a number of years. That doesn't seem to be, um, applicable to any more than a, a low percentage as far as I see in this community. We're, we're our own homeowners that live there, and we, we treat the property like it's ours, because it is. So that's all I had to say, but, um, sure.
Thank you.
Good evening, folks. My name's Christian Nixon, uh, and, uh, with my wife, we also own a three-bed, two-bath home that we, uh, list on Airbnb. And what I was, um, surprised about with Airbnb is there's a lot of vetting of folks on that website. If they've had prior bad reviews, they're not renting your place. And as a matter of fact, if they come here and they misbehave, you can give them a bad review. That makes it virtually impossible for them to rent other places. So there is some, some, you know, pre-vetting that happens. Excuse me. And then the other thing I thought was really fascinating, uh, looking at the clients that stayed in the home, uh, this summer, 50% of them either had relatives in Little Compton, they were here for weddings, or funerals, or what have you. They clearly, a lot of these folks had a lot of ties to the community. Uh, and same as this gentleman, we don't live in the home, we do live in town, so we do care very much about how that, that home is perceived. We spend a lot of time, uh, in the neighborhood, making sure, hey, did it, what happened? You know, was it okay? What can we do better? Uh, so I, to me, it seems that, I, I'd initially thought it would just be people from all over the place. It can come from anywhere. Who knows where they ever come from? But it actually didn't turn out to be true. Uh, we've had, uh, neighbors, they had extra people in the summertime, and then so they would use our place. We've got multiple lis-, uh, bookings from other people in the neighborhood, so, uh, you know, I, the thought of some of these people coming in from out of town and, you know, causing destruction and being rude, or, or what have you, were, were there a couple folks that were like that? Of course, but then we give them a bad review. They're never coming back. So certainly to that property, and as a matter of fact, they'll have a very hard time renting at any other Airbnb. So I just wanted to give a little, uh, thing about my thoughts about the actual, the folks that are renting these places. That, of course, is just my own personal experience, whether that applies to a lot of these other places, I don't know. But, um, I do think that worrying about parking, I think that's very smart. I think, you know, making sure these people are abiding by noise ordinances, uh, you know, occupancy limits, all that I agree, I think is, is very smart. So I think that that's, that's important as well, but anyways, that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else?
Can I just quickly? Hi, Kristen Silvare, Old Main Road, and I spoke at the last meeting. So first I wanted to apologize because I misspoke some of my numbers, which we've discussed by email, but I just wanted to formally say, uh, that I, I misspoke by accident. I wasn't trying to be misleading. But what I really wanted to say was, I thank you for being so cautious with this and reasonable in saying we're all going to work together and there's no animosity, and we're going to do research and talking to the solicitor in Newport and to look at the data. I just wanted to say thank you. As, as somebody who's been doing this for a long time, I really appreciate that we want all work together to make this work for the town, so thank you.
Thanks.
And if you do decide on an advisory committee, happy to help in any way, shape, or form that we can.
All right, I can just quickly say, like, just, again, which was just mentioned, I think a number of us would be more than happy to, um, be on an advisory committee and, and share our experiences, our, our thoughts, our fears, our hopes, and what we can do. So I, I think you'd probably count on a, a high percentage of Airbnb people to, to be volunteers, so I don't think you run out of the source.
I'm trying to think of an analogy of a work I'm struggling with, but this, initially from the party and the reaction of a couple of neighbors, I had the same instant response. All right, we got to do something about this, we got to control it. But then I realized what the, what the rude neighbors and rude renters had done was violated the existing rules and regulations that were already in place. Um, they didn't, they didn't break the rental agreement, and it has nothing to do with us. So I just don't want to, I don't want to stumble forward making more rules for rules that maybe weren't enforced enough. It's like adding a layer on something that's already there that didn't work the first time. So that, that's my cautious approach to this. Um, and, I mean, a lot of this should be by right, as far as I'm concerned. I don't like a lot of this, you know, kind of registered and tell people that they're breaking the rules. I mean, the town ordinances are the town ordinances. We're not creating a new ordinance for the violation, we're creating a new ordinance to control what they're doing if they violate. And again, we're, we're, we're in a 90-plus percentile of there's not a problem here, and we've got this little presentable problem that, I just don't want to bring a big hammer down on, on something that is going to affect people's livelihoods and lives. I mean, it's probably libertarian, I mean, sneaking out, but, it's just my opinion.
Fair enough.
Yeah. So it seems to me, after listening to Mr. Nixon especially, I didn't know I had that in hand, I didn't know a lot of us, so clearly this has been very informative to us. I was thinking about Laurie's comment about a bad tenant who drives 30 miles an hour or likewise, but good, but it would take five miles an hour. And then there seems to be largely self-policing, so does the town need to inject itself in this, other than the ordinances that we have? I mean, I, I, maybe that's the question that your folks are going to hear some from and say, no, we don't need any, any more ordinances. We, we, we can police ourselves. Seems to be that's what the, what the upshot of the people that do it have us for.
Yeah.
Okay, I think it's quite obvious that we have some great STR owners in this town, and the majority of them are accountable, although there's some who aren't. So somehow we need to craft something to make STR owners in this town accountable, so people know if you're going to accountable to the town for this day in this STR, the owner's going to be accountable for your actions. Uh, so I think that's important. Um, how we get there, we'll find out. Sounds like it's going to go to the planning board and maybe an advisory committee, so there'll be much more talk on it. But, uh, we just want to make sure that the owners are accountable, and I think the majority of the owners are accountable here, so.
Thank you. Thank you for a number of new thoughts, some amplification of some things that have been said a different way perhaps before, and, uh, uh, we will move forward with this in a manner that is respectful to the, the degree to which you have been patient with the process and, uh, and come forward with something that addresses itself to that which is not been done right and not steep up a bunch of things that are, that are right now just working fine. Thanks. Our next item of business is a request from Jim Locke to update the town council regarding his research conduct concerning solar municipal buildings. He's here with us, just as he's walking. It is he who brought forward a proposal that we use some of our municipal building sites for, uh, solar projects in order to gain, uh, economic advantages or something.
So I'll try to be as, um, brief as possible. Probably the most important thing I've learned in this last month is it turns out that the town of Little Compton actually pays a lot of money for electricity. It actually pays probably 22% more than the average amount paid in the state. And apparently there are historic reasons for that. It isn't just the town, it's all of us who pay a fair amount for electricity. The second thing I'm going to say is that the town and, uh, council and the administration here have done something that looks really pretty smart, and that is they've engaged in, in, in an, uh, an arrangement to purchase power from another source, uh, another municipal source, which actually substantially reduces the amount of money that the town is paying, the, the town council is paying for town buildings for electricity. Uh, it winds up being less than what the rest of the state pays, but still a substantial amount of money. Taking those two things into consideration, what appears at least to me is that, and, and the information that I've gotten from several different vendors, uh, in, in a pretty informal fashion, is that the town has the ability for the school and the public safety complex and the town hall to install somewhere between 35 and 70% of all the electricity used in the town. The amount of money that that's, so last year the town paid $110,000 a year for electricity. With the new plan that's about to occur, that's going to drop to $75,000. It's a- It's a substantial saving. But even so, if you add, if you take a third or two-thirds of that money away, the town will save anywhere between twenty-seven and fifty thousand dollars a year in electricity. Now, that's not a, a complete net savings because there are other costs associated with that. But as best I can tell from the end of the day, the annual savings, even including debt services, somewhere between twenty, between fifty and thirty thousand dollars a year. And that includes the amount of money that you would have to spend in either for debt service or for other costs. The reason that I'm here, the only reason that this works, is that there are now two major incentives from both the federal government and the state government that reduce the burden, the capital burden on the town. If we didn't have those incentives, it would cost between three hundred and fifty and seven hundred thousand dollars to do this. With those incentives, those numbers drop in half. And as a result of that substantial reduction, the, the town savings is considerable, even if you borrowed the money. So I'm here to give that report. It's, it's better than I thought it would be. I'd like to think that the numbers that I have are conservative. I certainly can't guarantee any of the numbers because we really can't do complete due diligence before sending out a, a response for proposals. But I do think it's time for the town to seriously consider getting an RFP out there for different vendors to consider putting solar on the roof of the school, the patient safety complex, and the town hall. And also to think very carefully, because time is running short, of getting money available in the town budget, either in one fashion or another, to make sure that this can be done. As, as you guys probably know better than I do, that needs to be done, you know, very early in the, in the course of the next year. We don't have a lot of time to do that. I'm happy to answer any questions. I'm happy to do whatever we can to move this forward. I think this is, this is good for the town in so many different ways. It's, it's one of the best things that I think we can consider doing. Not just for the environment, but also, more importantly, for many of us, for the finances of the town. Any questions?
I just got one comment. Bob, Tony and I met with Jim. First of all, I'd like to thank you for all the effort you've put into this. I know you've been working on it for over a month. But what struck me is I think the federal government is going to give us a thirty percent rebate on whatever it costs us. I forgot what you said, the state.
Sixteen percent.
Sixteen. So right there, we have forty-six percent that's going to be paid for by federal and state entities. So after looking at what Jim said, it was, I think we paid a hundred, close to a hundred and ten thousand. We got a thirty-five thousand dollar kickback, which we discussed in the meeting a few ago, from Warren, because we're in a solar project over there. So I think this would probably bring our electric bill down quite a bit. But I agree with Jim, the next thing to go before we can make any kind of decision on that is to get an RFP out, find out what the hard numbers are going to be. If we want to need to get a bond, I mean, right now, Jim's got down a cost of two hundred and ten thousand. And what I need to know is how fast we want to make that back. I don't, I don't want to see solar panels on our roof. They're supposed to last for twenty-five years. Who knows whether they will? But I don't want to see us the day that we recoup our money through electric, electricity to have these things fail because it's not going to serve us. That was, that's my two cents on it.
So, so Jim, I want to thank you for your updated comment. A few meetings ago, this council voted that you worked with the town administrator. Is that working well for you?
Yes, Tony's terrific.
The data you referenced, I don't have it in this packet. I don't know. Seems like you have it, I don't have it. Is that something you can share?
Yes. I, I'd be happy, A, share this and meet with anybody individually if they'd like. I'll find time to meet with whoever wants. And I, by the way, I can tell you what the weak points of this are. Because there are some.
Whatever that accumulated, go through the town administrator.
Oh, yeah.
I just have, I don't have it in my bag.
Okay.
And you referenced this thirty-five to seventy percent savings if we put solar panels in the school, the town hall, and the safety complex. That's quite a, am I correct?
Yes.
So that's quite a range, thirty-five to seventy. Is there anything that I can add to that?
If it were me, I would like to work with a range as part of the RFP and tell people that we'd like somewhere between thirty-five and seventy. The big variable there is how many roofs on the school you put panels. The school is an enormous square footage area, four or five different room, roofs, where you can put solar panels. I didn't know this. It turns out that shallow west-facing roofs are terrific for solar. And the school has a lot of that. So the big variable here is, in, in the moderate plan, it's a hundred megawatts a year from the school. For the max, I asked people, one vendor, to tell me the maximum amount of power the three different sites can generate. The school goes between a hundred and two hundred and fifty.
Some of the state of those roofs on the school are fairly new also, right?
As best I can tell, the only roof that would be at risk is this roof right there. And that's, I think, is going to be fixed. So I'm not positive about that. I have not, I can't do, you know, an assessment of the roofs. I just had, but everybody that, the two people I talked to thought that, that those roofs would work. And they're all roofs. Nothing is on the ground. We're not putting anything on fields or cutting down any trees.
So the thirty-five to seventy percent swing goes by how many solar panels? Jim's had a minimum solar panel, a maximum solar panel. That's what I figured about the step just then. When it goes.
Does it have to be on a structure? I know, I know we're not going to put it in the field, but.
No.
We have some little transfer station, we have some hot haul places that we could actually throw on a rail. That's a very clear.
I tried pretty hard to talk to a bunch of people in town. And the only pushback I ever got from anybody was putting it on the ground. So my own sense is, this is, I would have no trouble whatsoever putting it at the transfer station, especially, you know, the, the landfill at the transfer station. But I thought the best thing for the town would be to take one step forward and do this. You know, this is not a massive plan, but a very effective one for the finances.
Your west comment is appropriate because when I put the solar field in to get a grant, I had to have more facing west because the power company has a big demand in the summertime for air conditioners in the afternoon, and they want a more facing west.
I didn't know that until, you know, a week ago.
The entity, many of you may be aware, we purchase our electricity through a program administered by the city of cities and towns, in which they go out and obtain a broad contract for all of the towns. And that's how we buy our electricity. The electricity is bought from Constellation Energy in town as a result. And most cities and towns use that. The nice feature we got with Constellation Energy is they brought along an entity called Power Options, which is a nonprofit organization that does the kinds of things that we need. They, for example, were the ones who did the analysis that got us to the Warren solar project as the most cost-effective and best return on investment that we could make. They would be my first choice to go to, to say, all right, here's the proposal. How do we implement this? How do we execute this RFP? How do we find the right targets for this? And how do we get it in the hands of the right people? So I think Jim's work has made this timely to be able to do that. We can, we could do that tomorrow.
That would be great.
We could talk to them tomorrow and say, we've got a proposal we'd like to, to share with you. And they would help us with this idea of, so how well can we structure our RFP to be able to help us write it? And that's all, again, at no cost because they are our energy pack.
The only problem with that, of course, is that my fee for these services would fall.
Thank you for your great service and the cost that it is to develop.
And if anybody wants to hear more about this, I'm more than happy to meet or discuss it.
So, are you going to try to hit the ball tomorrow or do you want to comment either?
Certainly, yeah. Yes, I, I seek a motion that we take Jim Locke's proposal and put it before Power Options and get your feedback on how we proceed with our next step.
So moved.
Discussion on that.
Yeah, I don't, like I said, I don't have all the information for the data that he's giving just from what I'm seeing. So I'm not going to stand to that until I see it.
Well, it's just for an hour of fever going to come back. We're not, we're not blocking anything in, give an RFP, then a vote. What's going to happen then? Do you have that to public or?
Yeah, if I see the data that we need, so probably provide a lot.
So the vote that, I'll call for a vote on the motion, all in favor. Three ayes, one of the standing for the reasons side. Is there any further discussion? Text is an update from the town administrator regarding the purchase of the public works truck. The town administrator's report is in your package. The, and the director of public works is with us regarding the questions that may develop. He has done a procurement at our request. If you recall, we received one of the government automotive group a proposal which had no financing option available with it. He has gone back to other bidders while we record I O Tech Services Associates. Neither of those is able to acquire a truck of the size that fits our fleet. So we have satisfied the reviving requirement. And the government automotive group remains now our sole bidder. As it turns out, we have the ability with them and through the entity we financed the backhoe acquisition, if I'm remembering correctly, with, to acquire this DPW truck at a very timely fashion because it will sell tomorrow evening. I don't know if you've gotten that word, but that's going to be happening. And we're going to need, to be serious, we, we are now almost in December and our Mac truck is not functional and we need to make this acquisition. It turns out this sole bid indeed is a value push. The director can amplify it if he would like. But the administrator has recommended we approve the purchase of the replacement and the purchase will be covered by three sources of funds. The sale of the Mac truck, the budgeted capital funding, and the falloff of the payments for the backhoe that occurs in June of twenty twenty-three. Basically, we have a plus to that. Between the.
And this comes with a ten-foot plow, a ten-foot jump body for sanding and salting. So, I mean, does the public directive want?
If I, if I just to forego a speech, did you mind? Bill, I just want to point out that, I don't know, it was five years ago, maybe a little more, maybe a little sooner, you were suggesting solar panels on the school safety complex and the town hall. If my recollection, I know we're old, but my, my recollection, that's correct, right?
So.
I would say yes, because he did. But it interests me this, is my recollection correct that the roofs on the school are new?
The roofs are new, but the engineering needs to be proved out because we did have some structural issues with those beams last year.
Sure.
So, but it's a perfect facing roof and there's other roofs available. The real issue is, who's going to put it together and who's going to look over the project? Just as we have a project here, you know, there's, there's. Yeah, well, we'll talk about that on another day. But I, I'd be happy to help out with the solar. But I'm here tonight mostly to talk to the council about the truck. So just to let you know, it's a, it's a Ford F-650. It's a diesel, ten-foot body, ten-foot plow comes attached. We will have to purchase separately a sanding implement to install inside that body. It's a phenomenal truck for what we need. It's, it's small enough for our crew and large enough to do more than what we do with pickups now. We currently just have two pickups with small sanders on them. So winter is coming, and I would be happy and thrilled if the council decided to move forward with this lease. I think it's great for the town. It's great for the guys that work for the town. And I don't see how we can lose out on it. And it's white, which matches our other trucks.
Is it colored?
Yes.
It's, and it's, there's no CDL license required for this?
Correct. It's twenty-nine nine ninety-nine, uh, twenty-five nine ninety-nine is the GVW.
The whole is the, are.
The Mac truck is questionable between nineteen ninety-nine and two thousand and two. We purchased it in, in twenty-twelve for thirty thousand dollars. It was a great truck for us. It is a, it's a real truck, what I would call a real truck. Has air brakes, CDL license is required to drive it. Over the years, it has become a little bit of a tough budget to keep fixing it, to keep it running, and to keep someone driving it. You, you need a mechanic, you know, on call to keep it working during a winter storm. So.
So Bill, the next question I want to ask is really the most important question of the year is that about this truck. Not as many mailboxes will be knocked over?
Well, there's no guarantees on that, sir.
There's no guarantees. You have, you have a range.
So remember now, we only plow the twenty miles of town road. You'll find, there's ve, there's very few mailboxes that go down on town roads.
I'm going to approve the purchase.
Stocking. Motion's made in seconds. Is there further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you, everybody.
The next item of business is new business. We consider advertising a request for proposals for municipal legal services and town solicitors. In fact, it's also the input from the solicitor, virtually simultaneously with this, raising his hand and saying, it is his hope that the service, his service to the town and results we have achieved through litigation mediation as well as my respect for the town and local conscience. Thank you for your time.
So you really want to welcome this for now to do? So is it we consider advertising proposals for municipal services to town solicitor? I'll make that motion.
Okay. One second. I'll second the motion. Is there further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Left the vote, be shown as three one. Thank you. And thank you for what you do as, continue to do. The next item of business is a twenty-five percent proposal.
So you see, you're going to approve the proposal.
We're going to say, here are the, here are the jobs. I don't know how to do this. I've not done it before. We're going to, I'm going to request a proposal. We're going to advertise, activate the job, solicitor is available. Let's see what we can get through. Any further discussion? A request to renew a victory license received from Secundative End.
Marshall, go.
So, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
A request from Cole Walker to obtain a holiday sales license for Walker's roadside stand.
I hope this means he's coming back, Marshall.
Hopefully, hopefully he does.
Maybe he just needed a year off.
I'll second. Motion's made in seconds. Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Consent, Cal.
Marshall's place to consent, Cal, around five, I'll send very much point, think of discussion. Marshall placed consent, Calm around, file, let's send everyone to call, I think, discussion. Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
May I have a bill?
Motion to pay the bills.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I mean, no further matters before, I declare the meeting adjourned, thank you.